Dear Lord, we come to you tonight and our hearts fills with gratitude for all the ways that you blessed our community. And we praise you for the many ways that you blessed everyone here tonight and the families that they represent. We ask for you to continue to watch over them and the city staff and everyone that works for veteran of our community. We ask for your guidance and wisdom in the decisions that we make now. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, united in this bill with liberty and justice for all.
Should be in the state of your main minutes, do you have any corrections or additions within it?
Motion to second for adoption of minutes on, if ever say aye.
At this time, we'll ask if anybody would like to address the council. I would ask if you do, you'll ask to come forward, you'll have five minutes, you give us your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to address the council.
John Hartman Hall, on behalf of Gary Smith and others, if I could have three minutes, I think it's three, three minutes.
All right.
For socks. And I apologize after I speak, I need to go on some just a record, nobody's heard about here, but we should.
All right.
Well, I have, however you want me to deliver these photographs and videos on the phone drive for each one of them. And I want to distribute these.
Gary, you're the same.
Yes. So my name is Hartman Hall, I'm here tonight on behalf of Gary Smith and others, including my wife Margaret Jackson, who spoke to you before about businesses on West Street and Broad Street for two reasons. One is what's in those folders there, some photographs and videos from Mr. Smith's business placed in Broad Street. And the first reason I'm really here is to say and tell me so, my wife Kenny objected to all the hookers, others came to, to object to the reinsurance of their liquor license. And she can blame that trespassing, crash, and other problems we've had into it. Basically, what she reported means there's nothing else to do with that. It was true. She contacted after that, she contacted Pinkers Public Safety, ETL received a joint letter from all businesses down there. The police came to permit, it's gotten worse than ever, it really has. And you know, as they say, conduct rewarded is conduct of people. These recent videos here from Memorial Day and from this past weekend show you all a game up. Plenty more plays here from public over here to do that. The, what's on those videos and photographs, both of the container liquor drinking out on the street, out on Broad Street. There's triple X-rayed dancing, spanking, getting naked. There is pumping behind the cars. There's young girls jerking down the bridges and being right down where y'all just planted the new trees. Good luck, cars driving by, people walking by the sidewalk. This occurs on the street, on Broad Street, that's where the video shot, it runs right past City Hall again. Business owner itself, we've seen it, the film walking around at 22:00 AM, 2:00 in the morning, videos is 15 minutes long. It happened on private property before, we complained, vehemently. Our business is on West Street, have a public alley behind it, we complained about that. All business owners have, on that end, they've had to install video cameras. Pinkers Public Safety has access, direct access to this video camera that took these I personally cleaned up my parking lot of broken liquor bottles on Monday mornings. It's kind of not really fun to have to do. When you got a 1.75 liter Patron bottle that's spiked into your parking lot, into 150 pieces. My wife, when she was here before, spoke about tampons and condoms used, that she said had to clean up off our lot. Right next to this is the Christmas tree lot that's open at night that the Boy Scouts use and will use every year because we own it. And right across the street from that is a city park that y'all own, that the city owns where the young kids come to play. I can see all of it, including the business in question for my parking lots. When you watch these, I would ask you, ask yourself before a question, how would you feel if that happened in front of your business? How would you feel if it happened in front of your house? How do you feel, and I'm warning you, I wouldn't watch that in front of my kids and grandkids. Even people of eighteen, I'll not have to watch that. A liquor license is a privilege, I know that you everybody all know this. The business, however, has been in the practice nuisance since day one. And it got better for a minute, I gotta get VPS credit on that. But this is, it's surrounded by illicit street activity on public and private property now. This is horrifying when you watch these videos. Like I say, we've all had to go down and rope off our properties at night on Thursday, from Thursday night to Monday morning, and telling what's gonna go on on your property down there, private property, and I know what happens in city property because y'all got proof of it now. But y'all need to pass a motion or whatever, I don't plan to be an expert on Robert's Rules of Order, but what we want is that liquor license revoked, because none of this ever happened until that liquor license was granted. And after it was remitted, it was okay for a minute because the police officers were down there occasionally, but now it's worse than ever, and I think you'll see that. If not, you know, I don't want anything really bad to happen, but if not, we can all watch it on television, move it back here every month for some time by, I promise. I've never been here before, but I would.
Please, please don't.
Yes, sir. The second reason I'm here is to protect the city, number one, was to say we've been here before, my beginning legal research does not convince me that the city can escape legal liabilities or something worse to happen down there. Put the case law on the back of those folders. I believe the city mayors need to act to protect not only its citizens and business owners, but also itself. While all of this new behavior's going on the street, you can see cars and tractor trailers and everybody else is coming by. You notice between 12:00 or 2:00 in the morning, that's it. I also am closing to say that if y'all can't open mugs, I've uploaded them, they come out on a security camera, I upload them to the Dropbox and we'll all be able, everything is clear on mugs. Come by my office, I'll be ready to show it to you, take 15 minutes, and I'll email you the better version off Dropbox tomorrow. Thank you for the time and consideration, it's more than welcome.
All right, thank you for being here. Would others that like to address the council on this issue?
Hi.
Your little space name and give your address, or have five minutes.
I'm at Core 3, I live at 1313 Main Drive, but it's getting humid a bit out of the main transparency. I want to address a matter of government for it, a red for it. Government transparency in Washington, surrounding our local government, to be supported by executive sessions who are normally scheduled publicly. And if democracy transparency is not a fair formality, it is a violation of our Bush Republican Constitution. When decisions are taken in our community are made behind closed doors, it erodes the confidence we place in our leaders and our minds and comfortable of hopefully documents. Our city has seen an increasing number of private executive sessions raising legitimate concerns among our citizens about what is being discussed and decided without public oversight. This lack of transparency brings suspicion and disengagement, threatening the one between government and the people itself. I am proud of how light the efforts of our stand-up advocates, Georgia Watch Club and our legal committee, who have worked tirelessly to combat these practices. Their dedication to fighting secrecy and shenanigans associated with the non- transparency double A is gaining significant traction. They are not just a voice and the scent of, excuse me, of the shame, but a beacon of hope for those who believe in power of open, honest authorities. Our Watch Club and our legal committee are shining the light on practices that need scrutiny and accountability. They are advocating for the rights of every citizen to be informed, engaged, and active participants in the democratic process. Their work is crucial in ensuring that our government remains of the people, by the people, and for the people. The assistance we have in demanding transparency from all of our leaders, the support of the efforts of stand-up advocates, Georgia movement, and our legal committees as they try to bring about a government that operates openly and within territory. Together, we can ensure that our meeting, our community, remains a place where everyone is heard and is standing in transparency and every leader is accounted. To now, I would take this opportunity to read the actual laws surrounding executive sessions, mostly for the citizens, but possibly as a refreshment for all of our local government officials. Executive sessions must not be used to conceal the people's business. Local government can legally conduct closed meetings for very few reasons. Talking about anything that is not exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act behind closed doors and a violation of the law. Anytime a city council, county commission, planning commission, or board of education must hold its deliberations out in open for everyone to hear. In addition to, in addition, any committee formed by any of those empty bodies must conduct its discussions out in open. Executive sessions are never required by any of these empty bodies. The city council, county commission, planning commission, or board of education can legally talk about personnel issues, real estate transactions, and litigation in open, public meetings. Closed meetings are allowed, but not required. To discuss certain aspects of those three things, but the legal authority to do so is very limited. The law itself states that the exception to Georgia's open government laws must be interpreted narrowly. Limitation of those executive sessions' discussions or real estate transactions, but only to discuss the lease or the sale of a specific piece of property, litigation, but only to discuss a legal strategy with an attorney regarding an existing lawsuit or intent to sue. Personnel issues, but only issues involving individual government workers, provided no evidence is received against the employee and no personnel policy is discussed. If during a closed meeting, the discussion goes beyond these three narrow areas, the person presiding over the meeting must stop the discussion immediately. After the closed meeting, the individual presiding over the meeting must sign a legal affidavit that the discussion never went beyond these three narrow areas. Anything discussed behind closed doors that needs to be voted on must be closed, this law is intended to open meetings. Words out, if they counsel, commission, or board discuss a time employee in executive session, when they reiterate in a public meeting, they must tell who their hire and for what position as part of a motion perceived the public roster. That's what the law requires. The city council, county commission, planning commission, or board of education cannot discuss the Open Meetings Act behind closed doors. Discussion about whether or not a discussion is allowed in executive session must take place in a public, open meeting. To be even more clear, if there's any doubt about whether or not something can be deliberated on in an executive session, that debate itself has to be open to the public, and even if it is being discussed with the attorney. It is also important to point out, the presence of an attorney does not authorize a closed meeting. Politics, procedures, daily operations, and finances cannot be discussed in an executive session by a city council, county commission, planning commission, school board, or any local government gates.
Thank you. As council for the long-term agenda.
Nice job, y'all.
First on the agenda is a big order to order, a life-saving package.
Yes, sir. We remember back in October 2023, the council passed a resolution to prepare a preparation of local legislation authorizing the imposition of an additional 3% hotel, motel tax. Upon passage to that resolution, it was being introduced to the local act known as House Bill 63, by Representative Joe Campbell during the 2023, 2024 legislative session. Work was passed by both chambers and signed by the government council on April 22, 2024. This now empowers the city mayors to propose the hotel, motel, tax size tax of 8% in accordance with OCGA 48x13x51D. The final action required by the council is to amend the existing ordinance on lodging tax, which is before you in this packet, the introduction tonight, to come to you and allow you. Understand law, the additional 3% will be used for a specific designated area identified in the October 2023 resolution as a system for redevelopment.
Is the whole zone, the mine, so that we can see down the fiber and all that?
Yes, sir. It's an additional 3% of what we already declared.
All right. Do we have any citizen requests, council, this format change, if we go ahead and go off the line for introduction to that? We have a consideration of animal service fees.
It's easy, man. You know, the incubator kind of animal shelter is almost, is actually not too difficult. Hopefully we'll be able to, that will go as well. Before, you open me to be able to charge you, I don't know if you do that, you're about to do, so. What you have here, relinquish fee of $25 is good for.
Oh, sorry.
Better? As I was saying, the relinquish fee of $25, if I'm an animal, you have an animal, you watch, can't take everything anymore, that's the relinquish fee. Reclaim fees, these are, say your dog got off your property, animal patrol picks it up, takes it to the animal shelter. While it's in the care of the animal shelter, these are listed fees, $10 a day for intake per animal, but that goes up to $10 each type animal's body. $20 a night lodging, $25 a night for animals that we consider vicious. $10 per shot, if a shot is necessary, $10 for warmer heartworms, $20 per test for heartworm, parvo, FIV. $50 for removal of matted fur, I know that makes him high, but it takes a lot of time to remove that. $15 for bath, $10 for nail trim, $10 for feet test, $10 for medical access. The adoption fees, anyone's interested, $140 per dog, $75 per cat, and there's a $100 deposit for the state.
Have we worked it out, or Humane Society, is there a use prices in life?
They are, I actually went up on some of the, the Humane Society presented what their earnings were, and I looked at that, just giving a shot to somebody, you're just barely covering the cost of the shot. And that's, so we just pumped it up for five to 10, everything else is safe. The relinquish fee is due fee.
Other questions? Other question? Any citizen questions for on this, on the new animal service fees schedule?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it relinquish fee if you find or relinquish your animal, does that mean if you find a stray, you still have to pay, I mean, to get it?
I think that, even call animal control, you see a stray, you pick up yourself and they're, they're probably starting to be, not like that, for sure. They call animal control, that would be, that's really good. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Shakita Session, I live in 553, and I just want to address this to the citizens. We all know we're on the side of, we're facing a different type of thing than we have never faced before, and.
All right, I want to see it here.
Shut up and do your mic.
We're discussing animal control fees.
Yes, sir, that's my, that's the, I'm just guessing. I'm just gonna say this and keep it modest, we can all agree that the cities, that you guys, I'm just, you guys have made a terrible mistake, and as I stated, the curve will turn, we don't need the police harassing everybody, trying to make up for your lack of leadership, and we don't need the people to be harassed with extra taxes and fees. We can all agree that land value should go up and not decrease, but my thing is, it's a lot of things going on right now that you guys are trying to pay for, and you're trying to find the conscience of citizens for your lack of leadership, and we need a respect.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, other questions about the animal control service fees schedule?
I have a question.
Yes.
That's county wide, it's not just.
Yes. One question. Have a motion or other discussion about, or is he fit?
Given that these are in line with what the Humane Society has done, I'd make a motion that we approve these fees.
Motion to second to approve the fee schedule, it's amended on, if ever say aye. We have a consideration for free closure, Mr. Allen.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tyler Keen, representing First Baptist Church, their vacation Bible school program has requested to close the porch from South Place Street, from East Shawl Street to East Tru Street, between 8:30 AM until 12:30 PM on June 24 through 28, for the vacation Bible school. They do this every year.
Any questions about this, or a free closure request?
I'll make a motion, please let nine one one know about this.
Motion to second to approve the street closure request, it's amended on, if ever say aye. We have a consideration of alcohol, every question?
Yes, we have two alcohol beverage license applications. First one is Mr. Patel, owner of A&amp;S Family LLC located at 223 Open Road, has applied for an amendment, his license to add one, just more beverage licenses, his amendment. Then we have one from African John R. Webster, owner of, it is five o'clock somewhere, located 1000 Southwest Street, A, and he has applied for a bar license.
I'll keep hearing that.
Me and all the privacy, didn't that is only correct?
Other questions? Motion on the alcohol beverage license. Motion to second to grant, request on both of the alcohol beverage licenses, it's amended on, if ever say aye. Do you have some surplus to declare them?
Yes, sir, there is a list for you to declare, 55 items as surplus equipment for the city. We do this every year, just about every summer, these items will be declared surplus to the auction. We're asking for approval of this.
Is this going back to the old physical auction, or is this online?
This is all online auction.
What were you?
Other questions about this, or plus material?
I'm making a motion, we declare surplus.
Motion to second, declare this, this is the submitted surplus, on, if ever say aye.
How will this be advertised for people to know about it?
It's on the city website.
Okay, thank you.
Surely, if we've used it up, we've used it up.
You can tell I'm new at this, so forgive me, at 77, we also are forgetting, so.
We have a public hearing about the conference, are you recording it? Yes, sir. There are a motion to interpublic hearing.
Send me.
There's a second here, interpublic hearing, which, I'm not, I'm into the plan, on, if ever say aye. We will go back to the company of our country.
Hello, I'm John Ford with Water Company, 229 P Street Street, at Landor. I'm very happy to be able to come back before you after we did the Chappell and Scott Streets plans, and we're working on reaching your son. This is the very first meeting of this process. It's not a quick process, there will be several meetings that we will be holding, but I wanted to at least go through what is being proposed as part of this planning of it. At the next meeting, what we're trying to do is we'll try to do some introductions. Number one, my name is Don Ford again, I'm with Water Company. With me today, it's Janelle Flattie. I'm a planner, Janelle is a last-minute architect planner, and we've been doing this process this is my 40th year of doing conference planning work. So, it's been a while. Janelle's not quite so old. And as part of the problem, we want to talk about what is the purpose of the conference plan, we certainly want to talk about what the baseline conditions are. What our planning outline is, and we got a very detailed schedule that we put together to work through this process, and then we want to talk about what some of the takeaways may be. Planning team basically is more than just the consultants. The consultants will be, will probably be responsible throughout this process, but we want to identify stakeholders. There is a steering committee that's been identified, we'll go through that in a couple minutes, but the most important people are the engaged public, which will attend some of these meetings, and the likely policymakers that make the decisions, go, no go. The existing plan was, there was one done about every five years, and the current plan, that's showing the future land use map as of 2020, we're already four years into that. The picture there of City of Baybridge Conference of Plan was prepared by the city, but there's changes afoot, an open is coming, several many other development opportunities, we want to make sure that are considered as part of the planning process. We're going to be looking at essentially a 25-year timeline for the future. As part of that planning process, you really want to look at what you're going to do in the next year, the next five years, the next 20 years, and what do you have included, maybe as aspirational, you don't know that might happen 15 years from now, or it might happen 25 or 30 years from now. So, what we want to do as part of this process as well, is we need to identify what does Bangers need and what does Bangers want. There are things that you want to change, there are things that you want to keep just like they are, or at least the reasonable similarities of the way things are down. I think one of the other things that you want to do as part of the planning process is not only what you think internally, but what do you know, do you think other people think of Bangers? Yes, they need economic development opportunities, this is a place people want to retire. What do you want it to be in the future, how do you want it to be considered? So, all of that's part of what's required. But I think you also want to make sure you're guarding the community's sense of place. What makes you think of Bangers, what do you want others to think of it? What do you want to try to preserve? Do you want to try to change things that may be too urban, preserve things that may maintain the essential character of the community? That's why the character, of course, of the planning process is important. One of the major drivers of this is that in state Georgia, if you want to get towards the funds from all these loan and grant programs, you have to have a qualified local government, and that includes the comprehensive plan. By statute, you're disqualified if you do not have a comprehensive plan. But I think the important thing here is that planning is engagement. We believe that this meeting is just the very first step. We can't do the journey unless we start out with that first step. We can't do the journey unless you start out with that first step. And we want to make sure that if we have some questions tonight, that we can certainly try to address them as part of this planning process. We want to seek opinions because planning is a medium. It's where you think things are going, or where you want things to go. There is an impact of local geography and history, the sense of place. You certainly would not want to change Bangor to Tallahassee, mainly because you've been the wrong state. Then your planning narratives that you're putting together need to be understanding. I mean, we can talk jargon all the time, I know how to do that, but after working this process for this many years, I understand that what makes sense to the local people is what makes sense for the future of the community. And then we are doing continuing communications, we're opening the door, we've just opened up a new website that we'll talk about and give the address here in a couple minutes. We are, no problem. There are nine elements to a comprehensive plan according to the State Department of Community Affairs. Community goals, needs, and opportunities, qualified services, land use, and community work program are all pretty much required. Transportation is only required if you are in a metropolitan area, but we think it makes a lot of sense because you're not only talking about the transportation system, but you're talking about people's mobility and accessibility. We certainly would add housing because we do look for that, trying to provide support in terms of the housing community. A capital improvement program is only required in the state of Georgia if you are trying to provide funding to do impact fees. We don't know that you may want to do that, but I still recommend doing a CIP, which is a short for capital improvement program, so that you can consider it, you can look at that, and it would help you define what can we actually fund with impact fees, whereas what do we want to continue funding the way we did in the past. Next. The state has identified ten quality community objectives, they call them C Q Os. These are important, economic prosperity, death rate, resource management, inefficient land use, local preparedness has been identified as being an issue. We specifically want to make sure that we look at local preparedness this time, and sense of place, regional cooperation, housing options, doesn't mean you have to have one type of housing, you may want to look at different types of housing, transportation options, educational opportunities, and I think one that's extremely important for this community is community health. One of the concerns of the great, we worked in Chappell and Scott, was no street feet stats cost, and we think that that is an important economic driver of the community, and certainly want to include that, so we're trying to include a challenge this time. The process is pretty straightforward, and it's a road. The first, we'll look up there today, this is your first public hearing, we're planning to do four major stakeholders, steering committee meetings. These will be published, open to the public. The steering committee will be the decision makers, but we believe that public communication is extremely important part of the process. Go to the next one, the detail. The first stakeholder meeting is scheduled for August twenty-ninth. We haven't identified the location of that, it was almost certainly the heat. They will look at seeing if we want to move it around within the city. The second meeting is scheduled for September twenty-sixth. The first meeting, we're going to talk about strengths and weaknesses, opportunities, threats, what's the mission of the community. The second meeting, we're going to do a land use sheriff as part of our planning process, and we're going to be looking at alternatives, and where do we want to make the most effective placement. The third meeting is scheduled for October twenty-fourth. These are all Thursday's, by the way, and that meeting, we're going to talk about what are our real priorities, what do you want to focus the plan on. The next meeting will be November twenty-first, and that will be the draft plan recommendations. That then gives us time on December twelfth or January sixteenth, depending on when the planning commission wants to hold the meeting, or maybe they want to look at it for a month or two, but that will give that information to you within a timely pattern. Stakeholder committee members have already been identified, they're listed here. All of this information is going to be on the website. Then we get to the city council. The city council will receive and then do a public hearing, January twenty-first is what we're anticipating, possibly move it to February eighteen. Our schedule is that the city council's action to, now that's wrong, the city council's action to adopt the plan is supposed to be in March, so that we can get it adopted, and then October first is your deadline for DCA. DCA takes, well, actually, what happens is you submit the draft plan to the regional commission. Regional commission then forwards it to Georgia's Department of Community Affairs, they both do their reviews, within forty-five days is their deadline for trying to get that information back to you. If they want to make changes, or have you make changes, then that gives you planning time. So if we get this thing back in February from then, or even March, you still got five to six months to adopt the plan. The only thing that is required is that they have to have a hard deadline of October first twenty-twenty-five, so we have to. Next. What we have identified, what we hope are takeaways from just this very first meeting, is that people understand that we must meet the DCA requirements, that schedule, that this plan does provide guidance for decision makers, and that it maintains the quality community status for funding and grants. That's the most important element that you are required to do. But planning is engagement, it is public input, hearing what the public has to say. The public's not necessarily always right, but it's always important, and you need to modify any kind of elements of the plan to satisfy the community as well, because this is not my plan, this is your plan. We are doing a project website, that'll provide information, opportunities, and we're going to keep this website up, at least on a weekly basis, so that people can see what's the status, what's our next meeting opportunity, and those announcements. And we heard some people today let people know about the plan. Planning is iterative, which means you do, the next plan you do makes the plan that you built on successful. It's also like a pyramid, the more information that you gain, and the more you take the existing planning materials that you've done, all these, right over here, there's about five different plans from the past, and the idea is to build on top of those. The schedule must mean those requirements are reviewed, and the plan must be adopted for qualified, to qualify local preparedness stats. Next. Thank you very much for the opportunity to tell me about this, and there is a new website in town. W W W Bangor's tomorrow, all one word, dot com. If you leave a gap in it or just searching for it, at least they'll get you to the website. Hope that's good. If you have questions with me, I'm here. Any questions about the plan or the schedule? Thank you. We appreciate your helping to get us started with that program, and we'll take a whole year, obviously, to get planning better so that the outcome is, this time we have people to address countless sort of, I'm looking at the board. We have a motion to end the public hearing. Second. Motion is second to end the public hearing on Thursday, aye. The families of Van would do an ending, good luck, and good sight, and, thank you.